Meeting is called back to order at eight, or 6:38, excuse me, PM, please rise. And the clerk will lead us into the session.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second that the agenda of August 13th, 2024 be approved as submitted?
A motion, Megan. Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
I move that we remove item 8D from the agenda.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
We just need a second.
Okay.
Chris does the motion.
Okay. Oh, that's right, thank you. All right, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And then, can I have a motion in a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor?
We also just need a vote on the amended agenda. So we voted on the amendment, but now we need a vote on the amended agenda.
Amendment agenda, okay.
Yeah.
So it's two votes.
Can I have, so do I need a motion in a second?
We have it, we just need the vote.
Just, okay. Oh, okay. All right, all those in favor on the amended agenda? All in favor and none opposed, thank you. Did we just vote, vote on the consent agenda then?
Mm-hmm. Now we do the consent agenda.
Now we can vote, okay.
Yeah, so we need a motion in a second for the consent.
We just did a motion in a second. You did a motion. Chris, you did a second?
I did a second.
Okay, all those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? All right, may I please have a motion in a second that the treasurers report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending May 31st, 2024 be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor? None opposed? Special reports?
So, this is one of many firsts, so I'm excited to share our first special report with you this evening. Our food service program review by our director, Angela Dunson.
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. So I'm Angela Dunson, the food service director here at Penn Field. And this is my overview. So some of our successes this past school year, so students continue to be categorized free, reduced, and paid this year. The average daily participation was about the same for lunch, and it definitely increased for breakfast from the previous year. So for 23-24 school year, we served 343,515 lunches. For 23-24, breakfast served was 117,156, which was actually up around 8,000 meals from the previous year. So exciting that our participation is increasing. Free, reduced, paid applications, so Penn Field does not qualify for the CEP, which is the community eligibility provision, which allows all families to eat for free. So we do not hit that 25%. So families must still fill out an application each school year. These can be found online in the parent portal or filled out and mailed or handed in. Some new food items that we introduced this last school year, we had some ZZ brand soft baked bars, wheat crackers, and flavored grams. We, most of those were a one gram, so we were able to pair those with salads or parfaits and yogurts. And I'd say that the wheat crackers were pretty good. The grams were well-liked at first, and then they kind of dwindled. Soft baked bars were 50-50, but they did enjoy them if they were in like a parfait. Some other things we tried was orange chicken, cherry blossom chicken. Those two items were offered across the board. And then General Sals Chicken was offered at Bay Trail and the high school only, and they are huge hits, they are coming back this school year as well. We tried a cavatappi mac and cheese, which basically is just cavatappi is the shape of a pasta, and it was in a white sauce versus an orange cheese sauce. I'd say it was like 50-50. At middle and high school, we offered hummus plates, and we also tried a strawberry spinach pasta salad. So we continue to try some different things at the middle and high school. It's hard to gauge if they're popular or not, right? So when you introduce something new, it's hard to know if it was just like hot on the press because it was new. Do they really like it? We haven't really gotten a good way for the solidified feedback, but we'll continue to work on that and offer new items. The menus and daily offerings are offered, I'm sorry, are posted on the website. We transitioned from a K through eight menu to a K5, 6, 8, and then the 9, 12 menu. And this just helps us offer the middle school a little bit different choices versus K5 that maybe they don't fit into the meal recommendations. So we split those up into three. These are all on our website. And then we also have our daily offerings in addition to our hot entree menu that is listed out for parents, basically that's the peanut butter and jelly, the salad, hummus plates on the middle school one. So those are all available on the website for families to look at. Harvest of the Month, that came back this past school year. So that was pretty popular, especially from PTA members that maybe haven't experienced it previously. So we highlighted tomatoes, parsnips, and carrots, Brussels sprouts, squash, beans, potatoes, cabbage, broccoli, cauliflower, asparagus, and corn on the cob. Lo and behold, corn on the cob and roasted potatoes were the most popular. The least popular were Brussels sprouts and cabbage. I'm going to guess that the least popular, maybe they've just never been introduced to them before, they don't have them, never tried them. We did utilize PTA volunteers at a few of the schools to hand out samples. Otherwise, they were offered on the line for any student to try on that day. It will continue in the coming year as well. On these trying days for the Harvest of the Month, we had surveys, so we encouraged the students to fill those out. Elementary definitely had a, an advantage when we had PTA members, really encouraging them to fill them out. Middle and high, it was sporadic, but we just combobulated the data altogether. We celebrated School Lunch Hero Day with the team to acknowledge all their hard work. We also enjoyed some guest servers to include Dr. Tasha Potter and Dr. Dan Riffle. So we welcome guest servers anytime, so if you're interested, let me know. But it's definitely nice to have a different face in, on those days. So it's just a fun time, so we appreciate them coming. We celebrated in March National Nutrition Month and National Breakfast Week. So for Breakfast Week, the theme was Surf's Up. We tried some new items to include frozen yogurt bark. We tried chicken and waffles at lunchtime, an apple berry smoothie, a strawberry banana smoothie, and also cinnamon buns. Internal catering has increased year over year. So some of the bigger events that we did internally was the E&amp;L Fall Feast at the high school. We helped coordinate the fifth grade breakfast at Harris Hill in Cobles. We helped with the eighth grade moving up day, and we also helped with the senior breakfast with grilled bagels. That was a highlight. We provided lunch meals to Rochester Christian School for the school year. They anticipate continuing again to utilize our services. So this would be year three that they're utilizing us for meals. As far as equipment goes, we did replace a steamer at Cobles in Indian Landing, and we added a single steamer at the high school in the main cafeteria. This is nice because we have consistent cooking options. The high school didn't have a steamer. The others were hit and miss, so it's nice to have new equipment. The common space, we moved to a temporary space, which is right here in the library. The transition was smooth, seems to be going well. We adjusted breakfast offering time as well. A few of the challenges we had last year was staffing, so we worked short staff throughout the year. I would say I had one employee who I had asked to temporarily help fill in a gap, and she filled in that gap all year, so thankful for that flexibility. Heat advisory days towards the end of the school year, so we worked with the team to ensure students and staff needs were met with ice water and popsicles. UPK delivery, another big challenge, but we made it work. So we secured a specific vehicle for these deliveries, and we hired a staff three days a week for those deliveries, and then we utilized a transportation staff for the other two days to get those deliveries made. Negative student balances, so we ended with approximately 23,000 in negative balances, which this is down approximately 7,000 from the previous school year. Emails continued to be sent out two times a month. We also sent out physical letters twice over the school year to those that had $10 or more of a negative balance. Some updates for this current school year, so USDA commodities, we're utilizing all of our entitlement towards brown box items, fresh fruits and vegetables, and diversion. So we do have a new vendor. Our previous vendor was Palmer's, which is where we got our food deliveries. So it was nice that they were all in one. We now will have a new vendor delivering our brown box item, which is Willow Run Foods. We are, again, trying some new items, which includes sloppy joe, mac and cheese bites. We're trying some broccoli cheddar soup, pasta alfredo, some hot honey beef. So not all of these will be across all schools, but they are somewhere in the district. If we're doing it at elementary, they'll be at all elementary. And then as far as an updated vendor for paper, it's Hill &amp; Marx. So we've experienced Hill &amp; Marx for about six months last school year. Previously, we had Regional, so now we're back to Hill &amp; Marx. Catering, we're going to continue to build this up. Non-negotiable goals for food service team that we adapted from a state of training. So some things that as a food service team we decided on is we will not run out of food. So if we do run out of something that's menued, we should be offering something in its place, especially the hot entree. So if we run out of pizza, we should be grabbing those chicken tenders or something else that the kids really enjoy. We will be nice to our customers, so this, you know, kids are kids, and sometimes it's challenging. So our goal is that we're going to be nice to all of our customers. Our elementary students may change their order, so at elementary, they preorder in the morning. And something I didn't mention on here as an update is we did do electronic preorder system that we trialed at Harris Hill this school year that worked out really well, and we're hoping to implement that at all of the elementary schools this coming year. Basically, get rid of some of the paper, and it's electronic that they're ordering. So elementary students can change their order, right? So they come to the line, they didn't know what it was, they ordered their normal peanut butter and jelly, it looks good, they want to change the order, we allow that. And only food server you're willing to eat. Professional development remains the same, director needs 12 hours, cook managers need eight hours, and all other staff six hours. A lot of times we meet this by getting our staff sort of safe certified. So this past school year, we had six staff who took the course and passed. Will continue to get more staff certified. We are utilizing the Institute of Child Nutrition, the ICN, trainings for more online opportunities. In four staff are attending the personal conference through Upstate Institute Training in August, which is next week. I've coordinated CPR AED training to be offered to the food service staff at the end of August. So it's really challenging to get all of our staff to these trainings sometimes when it's during our operations. So we have coordinated one training over a course of two days. It was not mandatory for the food service staff, but a majority of them have signed up, so we'll be doing that at the end of August. We continue to use Mosaic for our back of the house, which is to update our recipes and production records. This helps us ensure that we're within our nutrition standards and compliant. We continue to use Mosaic for the front of the house for our point-of-sale system, and we utilize MySchoolBox for payment for students. This is updated, I've already created the video, and it is posted online, but we have a PowerPoint hopefully geared towards kindergarten families that don't have other students. However, it was good for all, so it's kind of posted on our website as a overview for food service. As far as nutrition standards go, for fall of 2024, there was a lot of talk about flavored milk going away. That is remaining. Fall of 2025 is when a lot of those added sugars need to start being reduced. Over the course of time through fall of 2020, 2027, the added sugars will be down, the sodium will be down. So we have a couple of years to get the sodium down. A lot of this will depend on manufacturers, because they're going to have to reduce what they put into these, some of these products that we get. For Monroe County meal prices, the handful of highlighted schools on here are the only schools that are not CEP eligible. So these are the schools that are not doing the CEP, free meals for all. Penn Field is keeping our prices the same, gearing towards keeping our prices the same from last school year. So $1.75 for breakfast, $3 for lunch, and 65 cents for additional milk. Reimbursement rates that are posted. Again, our reimbursement rates depend on our participation, so we're always encouraging families to have their students come through the line. I'm open to feedback. We like to get student involvement. So those are kind of some of the goals coming up, is getting in with those student councils and younger kids to like really talk about what they like, don't like, what they want to see, and that type of thing. Any questions?
Or members' questions? I have two. First is, are there always hot vegan options?
I wouldn't say hot vegan options, no. So as far as vegetarian, so on the menu, on the main menu, there is a little asterisk that says if something can be meatless. So something like tacos in a bag. So that has a little asterisk next to it, a student could come through the line and opt not to get the meat. They could just get the beans and the toppings that are with it, because students have to take at least three of the five components that are offered, and one of them must be a fruit or vegetable, so they can opt not to take the meat. On the days that it's something like hot dog or hamburger, then not necessarily that there's a hot item, although we, if we work with a family, we can offer veg, like a vegan, I'm sorry, vegetarian burger. There is a few families that reach out, and we make sure that we know when they're ordering. And that's happened more at the elementary level. So now as they get to middle school, it's harder to gauge who wants and doesn't want when we don't have that pre-order, but, so not every day there's a hot item for a vegetarian.
But there's always salad, so at least there's a cold option.
And at middle and high, we're introducing the hummus and vegetable plates and those type of things. And we always have bagel yogurt. So it just depends on what they like and what they choose to take.
Yeah. Great. Secondly, I remember last year I bugged you a little bit about the 30, 30,000 K over. So now I'm still bugging you, I'm happy that it's less than 7, 7,000 less.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I love our sort of no shaming. You know, we're not going to turn a kid away because, because they're in the red, the family's in the red. Although I was thinking about that and realizing that I, I think that if a child brings à la carte items up, and they have an unpaid balance, the person at the register is still going to say, "I'm sorry, you can't have that." "You have to have a, you have to have the main meal." Is that right?
So à la carte, they would have to pay with cash, right? So if they had a negative balance and they came up with, let's just say they were purchasing a bag of chips, if they have the cash to purchase the bag of chips, we do allow them
Yeah.
to purchase that. But if they're trying to say that that's their meal and be charged, it has to be a full reimbursable meal. So that means they have to take three of the five components. One must be a fruit or vegetable in order for the charge to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, so I, I think what I was getting at is, in some respects, there's sort of no getting around the fact that if, if a child has an unpaid balance, they could be turned down, potentially in front of their friends, and I don't think that's a bad thing. So this is a trick question.
So turned down in what way? What do you mean? For the à la carte items, if they didn't, if they came through the tray, and they had their tray, and they grabbed a bag of chips, yes, we would say, "Oh, we don't have money for chips today."
Right, or even I think a bagel, if they didn't like the hot, isn't that also?
It's an option, so as long as they have the other components, they can get it. But if they're just coming to register with a bagel and they don't have cash, then they're going to be told.
I sort of know this because I have forgotten to pay the balance a few times, and my child wasn't able to get a bagel.
So they have to take at least three of the five components, one must be a fruit or veg. So if they took the bagel and a piece of fruit and a milk, we'd let that go, and it would be a charge.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to, I don't have an answer. But it
Like education of the staff?
If the goal is to not embarrass a child, well, that's going to happen if they choose a bagel, and they have, potentially be told in front of their friends, "You can't have that." You know?
So I would say that I am hopeful that I've trained my staff enough, but there are times that I'm sure they're busy, and they're just like, "Nope, can't have that, nope, you don't have money." But we try to be thoughtful about how that response is, right? So it's like, "Oh, why don't you grab a fruit and a milk?" When you get to the middle and high school, it's harder, because they're like, "No, I don't want it, I'm just going to throw it away." And it's like, "Well, then you can't have the bagel," right? So it does get hard in our communication to the student if they don't know. But we try to have that information on our website, families do call and ask about that. We have posters and signage within the cafeteria that talks about must taking three of the five. So again, it just comes down to the education piece, I think, still, to families and students. If students can just understand that they have to take it, they're not all going to want to, but
I think the hard part is that, is obviously if there's a family that would qualify for the free or reduced, well, first of all, I, I wish that they would fill out the, for the form so that they could sort of, so that we could be reimbursed for that.
Yeah.
And then those families who wouldn't qualify for that, they're getting free lunch just from not paying their bill. And that's, it still bothers me, I don't have an answer.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything about that.
I have a question.
Completely unrelated. I'm just wondering, I heard you mention that you've had certain families reach out to you, and you can, they can get the vegetarian meal ahead of time, or order it ahead of time. Do all of our families know about that at the elementary level?
So, part of that is because we don't typically, so if somebody's a vegetarian, so there's, there's allergies, right? So if somebody's allergic to something, and they have something on file with the nursing, we get that information, and we try to work around that, right? And especially if they're a free or reduced student that's qualified. So we aren't able to cater to preferences, right? So we have a lot of families who practice gluten-free at home, they want to be gluten-free at school, what do we do? So we aren't mandated to have to offer them something. However, we want to be accommodating, which is why we try to have different options available. So I would say that a couple of the families that we've worked with is like, the student consistently was purchasing, you know, coming through the line and purchasing meals. So it was like, what can we do to help the student be able to have something available where it doesn't stand out, feel, you know, we're not, we're going to try to mimic the meal of the lunch menu to their offering as well, so it doesn't feel like they're getting a whole different meal, right? If we're going to give them, I don't know, something that might be enticing, and we're serving something else that day, right? We want it to be similar, so it doesn't feel like an outcast. So it really just comes down to kind of word of mouth. But, you know, if families are really like, "Hey, my child really wants to come through the line, how can we work through this, can they come two days a week versus three days?" You know, we do work through some of that, especially when it comes to allergies. And again, preferences, we can't really gear to, but if they have an allergy to something, we have something on file with nursing, we can definitely work to accommodate.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there a way, right, that we can, especially new families that are coming in, like, let them know that that's a possibility?
So a lot of it is nursing, right? So nursing has to have something on file for the allergy piece of it, and then it comes to us. We're making sure that those notes are on the student's account, so that when they come through the line, the register, the cashiers know. It does say on our website, generic language around if you have, you know, have additional questions about allergies or food, I forget what it says exactly, but to reach out to us. So that's kind of our, our doing to say we're open to having you call us. So it's not specific to that, but it's generic language, if they have additional questions around allergies or food intolerances.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Angela Dunson, where were you when my children were in elementary school?
I don't know, but here I am.
Girl.
She was at Hillside with me.
So my, I have a kiddo who is allergic to peanuts and eggs and dairy and all that good stuff. So she never experienced school lunch, because it was terrifying.
Yeah.
You, she never, she never had an option, right? So for however long her school career was, I woke up every day and made her lunch.
And, you know, the allergies and the manufacturers have come a long way as well. So like ZZ's brand is great because it's manufactured in a tree nut, peanut, tree nut facility. They, you know, they meet the school regulations, you know, they have all of those pieces, like no eggs, you know, all of those things. So a lot of the manufacturers have come a long way with offering products to K-12 that are gearing towards some of those.
Definitely. So with the kiddos who have allergies, so, you know, everyday peanut butter and jelly's offered. Is there an alternative nut butter, like maybe almond or cashew or sunflower?
So we don't make them specifically. So we offer Uncrustables at some schools, as well as making peanut butter and jelly. So we do have sun butter and have access to sun butter.
Yeah.
But again, that would be like kind of that preorder.
Right.
How do we know how many sun butter, you know, ones to make? Not make who's taking the right one, like, we have to control that.
So there is a version, a frozen version of an almond butter
There is.
sandwich, just like the un-
Retail, there is, yes.
Yeah.
So a lot of times, they just haven't made it to the K-12 segment yet, where we can order it from our vendors.
All right, do I need to call somebody? Do I need to write a letter? Do I, okay, all right. So that was my first question about the peanut butter and jelly alternative. And then also, is there a non-dairy cheese alternative? You know, like, again, the mac and cheese and the pizzas are very popular with our kiddos.
Yeah.
So like, the kids who can't have the dairy, is there a possibility of having?
So it kind of loops though, so right now, we don't really have an option. We have the lactate-free milk, that's kind of like what we have. But as far as cheeses go, no, we don't currently. But that doesn't mean that manufacturers won't come out with things, we can still navigate. So we can definitely look into those things, but sometimes those are hard.
I know, and I know it's not you, it's like the manufacturers and what is acceptable, and
And then do our vendors carry it?
Right.
And how much do we need to buy for them to carry it?
And I also think a lot of families don't quite understand this, because I remember your last presentation, you were here, you said how the pop, a kiddo came home and said the Pop-Tarts at, at school taste so different to the Pop-Tarts at home, and it's because it's reduced sugar, and like, you know, all of these, it's a health, yeah, I don't like that word. But, you know, it's a better version for our kiddos, and that's why it tastes so different. And I don't believe a lot of families understand that, that the food at school is different because it has to meet all these specific standards.
Definitely agree.
Nutrition standards, right?
Yes, yes.
So I don't know if we can pop that somewhere on the website, like, I don't know.
Yeah, so all of our snacks meet smart snack regulation. So a lot of times I hear families say, "Oh, I don't want my student to buy the chips and the this and the that." But the Doritos that we serve are reduced fat, they're not the same as what you're buying in retail.
Reduced sodium and all that good stuff.
Right, same thing with Pop-Tarts, those types of things. So it's really just, again, education
Right.
that those items
So just like
Our ice cream is reduced fat, right? They have to meet the smart snack regulation. So they might be getting an ice cream cone, but it's like half what you would get in a store of calories and fat.
And then my last question for you is, what is a brown box item?
Oh, sorry, a brown box item is, item is just a, items that are like, just ready to serve. So like vegetables, so like frozen peas, corn, carrots. There's cheese, right? So shiitake cheese is ready to go. So it's really just, I don't know why they call it a brown box.
Ready to go items.
It's ready-to-go items that are from the USDA, yeah. So, and then diversion, those products are like where we took our, like beef or chicken, and we diverted it into a product.
Okay.
So we're taking our dollars that we have for that, we're making it into a new item. We get that from the manufacturer, which is using our, our pounds
Okay.
of item.
All right.
That makes sense.
Wait, Ms. Dunson, thank you so much.
Is that like, make it into a different type of protein?
So not a different type of programming, protein button item. So instead of us getting in chicken patties, let's say, grilled chicken patties, we can take those grilled chicken patties and turn it into chicken tenders or something like that, right? So it's just diverted into another product using our commodity dollars.
Good, thank you.
I appreciate you, thank you for all that you've done. You make nutrition and food for our kids so exciting. And sign me up for guest servicing and for sampling.
All right.
I mean, not offering samples, eating them.
Eating.
Thank you.
I had the same questions, I think that everybody else did, but also, really the most important one is, the Brussels sprouts, are you roasting them or boiling them?
So we did roast them, and
Really?
Yeah, and so last school year, our recipes that we use for Harvest of the Month, we did post online on our website. So again, I don't know how many families are actually going to our website and navigating it, but there's a lot of information on there. So we were putting the recipes in there as well.
That was nice.
And I feel like there was some kind of bean, something that happened, that a lot of kids really liked Western bean or something. And obviously, the goal of like Harvest of the Month is that it's fresh, so that particular recipe was not fresh beans. So that particular recipe was not fresh beans, but they really enjoyed it, highlighted beans, so that's a win, right? Because beans is one of our offerings that we have to do weekly, so.
I love it, thank you.
Any questions anymore?
No, but can I give a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to echo what Krista said about just everything you do is amazing. Like, you're, well, you, you're, it's obviously that you're managing a lot, but you're also doing it while including student voice, but within so many requirements that you have to fulfill. So just thank you so much for all your hard work, it is really appreciated.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for even fielding all of our questions.
Glad I had answers.
No, and I think it's, I think it's awesome that, you know, there's new items that the kids can try. Because then that's opening up, that, opening them up to something that they may like, that they didn't try before. And we always love, in my house, the Harvest of the Month. So thank you so much for everything, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
Okay, so now we're going to move into superintendent's reports. Do I say this or do you say this?
Okay, good.
Something special.
Yeah, that's a special report, yes. All right.
Are we ready?
So we're on 4A. Yeah. All right. So whereas the Board of Education on July 18th, 2024 approved the employment agreement for the superintendent of schools, and whereas the board and the superintendent have agreed that certain provisions in the employment agreement require correction, including certain dates, paid leave accruals set forth in Section 7.1, and the employer non-elective contribution and retirement provisions set forth in Paragraph 7.10. Now therefore, the board resolves as follows. The superintendent's employment agreement approved by the board on July 18th is corrected to reflect the terms noted by the board in this resolution. The board president is duly authorized to execute a corrective agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion and a second?
No motion, second.
All those in favor? All in favor and unopposed? Now we are on superintendent report.
About that, we'll get better each time. Okay, so for our superintendent's reports, we're going to start with student and staff honors. We're going to share Penfield's updates. And we'll start with Dr. Kenny so he can share with everyone our administrative appointments. We'll move into business updates and then we'll welcome Kevin Marriott up for professional learning plan. So our student and staff honors. We are really excited and proud to announce and acknowledge the following student athletes. They were named to the all Greater Rochester teams for the spring season. In addition, seven of these athletes received honorable mention, recognition, as detailed in the agenda tonight. We also have Coach of the Year. So we want to announce and share congratulations for our Penfield High School lacrosse coach, J.J. Shembry. He was recognized as the 2024 Coach of the Year for Section 5 by USA Lacrosse Magazine. Congratulations, J.J. We're going to move into bus safety program. Our bus safety program for our kindergarten families is a longstanding tradition in Penfield. This program was held over two nights last week. And I want to thank our Transportation Department for their efforts in providing this warm welcome to our new kindergarten families. And so now, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kenny.
Thank you, Dr. Potter. I'd like to take a moment, good evening, Board of Ed, good evening, members of the community. We've had a very busy summer recruiting and hiring some of the best and brightest leaders from around Monroe County. And it is my pleasure to, just to speak to a little bit on each of those leaders that are coming into Team Penfield and recognize our administrative appointment. So first, I'd like to just recognize Ms. Maureen Mustafa George. She will be our Director of Student Engagement and Cultural Relations. She comes to us from previously working at the Children's Institute as well as the Partners in Restorative Initiatives, otherwise known as PERI. And has been an Associate Director and Executive Director in both of those positions. So we are excited to have Maureen with us this school year, she actually started on Monday. So we're excited to have her on board. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Melissa Phelps. She is coming to us as our Special Education Administrator at Penfield High School. She comes to us as Director of Special Education from Genonda, so that was her previous employment. She's really excited to come and work with our kids and our staff and provide some amazing services and make sure that our kids are getting the best that what Penfield has to offer in our special education program. Onto Ms. Radia Bridges. By the way, you noticed it's been a busy summer, right? Ms. Radia Bridges, she will be an Assistant Principal at Bay Trail Middle School. She comes to us as a current administrator in East Rarona Quay. And we are really excited about Radia and the energy that she'll bring to the position. Looking forward to working with her. Christina Bajardi, who is here tonight, hi Christina, welcome. She is going to be the Assistant Principal at Harris Hill Elementary School. So we are really excited to have her join the Harris Hill team and family. She was a TOSA in the West Rarona Quay School System and we are eager to have her come and be part of our team there. So thank you for being here and we look forward to working with you. And next slide, thank you. And last but not least, please join me in welcoming Ms. Mike Nita Perez as our Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Access. Thank you so much for being here, Mike Nita. She comes to us from the Rochester City School District and was a leader there in a variety of roles, at a variety of schools, but most recently at the East High EPO. So congratulations on your appointment. We welcome you and look forward to working with each and every one of our new administrators. And more to come, by the way. And I guess I would, would like to also say congratulations to Dr. Potter, because I don't know if we formally said that. So congratulations on your administrative appointment.
Why, thank you, Dr. Kenny. I'm excited to step into this administrative appointment. And so with that, I thought it was important, and in partnership with our Board of Education, bringing to the community this evening my entry plan. So I'll spend some time walking you through all of the areas within the work that I look forward to helping us continue and to strengthen as I step into this new role. One of the things that I want to just acknowledge is that it's very important to me that these four words, and that you know that these four words are centered in all of the things that I'd like for us to do as a community. But I strive to provide equity and education for all of our students so that they can reach their academic, social, and emotional potential and feel a sense of belonging. Our students will have access to learning opportunities and materials representing and affirming their identities. I look to and I strive to foster a learning environment that holds excellence, rigorous instruction, and high expectations for all of our students. The curriculum will be racially, culturally, and linguistically diverse. I look to engage and listen deeply to the members of the district community in ways that cultivate trust and build relational capital. I strive to empower students by giving them voice in their education, their decision-making power in the curriculum, and agency in choices to engage in social change for our district. We wanted to share, and this was really important to me, to bring forward to you just a little bit about my background. And so my qualifications for this position, just so that the community knows exactly who they're getting. I have, for the past 31 years, been a member of public education. I spent 14 years with classroom experience, 12 years as a building-level leader, of which two were an assistant principal and 10 were building principal. I also spent five years, the past five years, as a district leader, of which there were times when, you know, just thinking about this pathway that I've taken to get to this point, I'm just super excited to now be appointed and serve as your superintendent. But prior to becoming assistant, a superintendent, I was the Assistant Superintendent and I also was in a district-level position as director. I want to just highlight our demographics. And I think it's important to note the demographics because we have 4,700 students, approximately 4,700 students, and approximately 939 faculty and staff. And that number's changing, that's why I said approximate, particularly because of the names that were referenced tonight by Dr. Kenny. But I really think it's important as we're moving forward, one of the things that I really want us to emphasize is looking at our demographics so that we are inviting folks to our district to represent a diverse workforce, one that mirrors the demographics of our students. Over the past three years, our district has really been centered in the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. And the four principles of the culturally responsive sustaining education framework are here. And in this role, I will continue to move the district forward with these being a part of our district priorities. We also have had many conversations as an instructional leadership team and with our faculty about making sure that we are focusing on multi-tiered systems of support, social-emotional learning, restorative practices, and then with Dr. Maloney's leadership grading for equity. I believe strongly in our district. We have many district strengths and they're not all represented on this slide. But I do want to highlight that one strength that we hold is a dedicated and committed and supportive Board of Education. I think as stewards in our community, it's very important to have a board that supports the work that we've started and the work that we will continue to do. We also have talented students, hard-working faculty and staff and administrators. And in addition, we have a community that demonstrates a belief in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so, opportunities for us to grow. I think it's important for us to take a look and pay attention always to the ways in which we can improve our school climate for all of our students and the culture for our faculty and improve communication with our families, our guardians, and caregivers. We want to, as I referenced earlier, make sure that we are recruiting, retaining, and promoting diverse candidates. We want to reimagine and rebrand our district. And by this, I mean making sure that information is shared transparently and consistently, and more importantly, telling our story. Instead of there being a narrative about things that are happening in our district, we want to be proactive, proactive instead of reactive, and share more about the great things that are happening in our district. We want to redesign our curriculum to be culturally responsive and relevant. And we want to sustain positive relationships with various stakeholder groups and demonstrate that transparency that I was just referencing. We want to devote time to listening and learning more about the ways that we can continue to improve in our district. So my entry plan is organized using the collective commitments of our Equity Long Range Plan. I use this as a framework to continue the work in our district. And as you get to, as we get to each one of the collective commitments, you will notice that I'm synthesizing at the bottom exactly how we look to employ this, this collective commitment. So I'll start with saying that there are a number of district policies that we'll look to, to write. And I believe that the policies help to hold us accountable in all of the ways that we need to when we speak about educational equity. There's a place here when we're promoting and enhancing and sustaining a positive and safe school climate and culture that we lean on our buildings to support what the climate is for all of our students. And this past year, our principals, along with their leadership teams, they developed school climate plans. So, and our directors also have climate plans that support the building leadership. But we want to continue to strengthen these plans to make sure that our students are coming to school and experiencing school positively. And then lastly, developing and reviewing and implementing school safety plans. You know, our previous board meeting, we had our District Security Preparedness Manager, Mr. Brandon Fox and George English, Mr. George English, our Director for Facilities and Buildings and Grounds, talk to us about our school safety plans. And, you know, thinking about the work that I need to do as a superintendent, as our, as our new superintendent, I've already had several meetings with Brandon. Brandon and I have talked about our safety and security plans. We met this morning with Captain Schoffel and Deputy Thurston from the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, as well as Fire Chief Baton, to really make sure that I'm aware on all of the ways that our district has utilized them as partners and more so, how we can continue to foster that relationship. Because safety is, is a priority for me in this role. And I know that it is for Brandon, so we'll continue to work together to make sure that our district is safe for all of our students and our faculty. I wanted to highlight each one of the offices. So as we continue to go through the entry plan, you will notice that there are specific things that in partnership with each one of our Assistant Superintendents, that this entry plan and my work as superintendent will continue to strengthen and work in partnership with each one of them. So speaking about curriculum and instruction and a review with Dr. Maloney, we will work together to review our curriculum documents for standard alignment and to identify any cultural gaps. We will develop lessons and align culturally responsive and relevant texts that are representative of all cultural histories. And we will implement and continue to process, continue the process of communicating and implementing the pillars of equitable grading, accuracy, bias-resistant, and intrinsic motivation. Collective Commitment 2 is really centered on professional learning. And I'm really excited to show a picture here from our leadership team. We, we had our leadership retreat a couple of weeks ago. And this was an opportunity, we started with, we had our instructional leadership team read two texts. They came to the, the leadership retreat and they had to unpack the text. We had six groups, three were assigned to one text, the other three were assigned to another text. And they really did a phenomenal job highlighting all of the ways in which the text can help them as leaders support our students and our families and our faculty. So this is just a glimpse into our leadership retreat. But I think what's really important here is that we will continue to deepen our engagement in our professional learning experiences with our leaders, with our educators across the district. Collective Commitment 3, again, this is really the support of Dr. Kenny and our workforce hired that is representative of the district and student population. So what I have, we've been talking as a senior cabinet quite a bit. And I think that these words really kind of come right from, from Dr. Kenny. I know that he wants to find as many ways as possible to celebrate our faculty and our staff across the district. He wants our faculty and staff and all of us to really experience a safe workspace. But more importantly, we want it to feel diverse and we want it to be inclusive. And so, again, we're going to work to recruit, hire, retain, and promote our diverse educators. And we want to strive for Penfield to be a destination district. We want this to be a place where people want to come and work. We want folks to find value in the things that we're doing for our students. And more import, more importantly, help us lift all of the great things that we've already begun to do. Collective Commitment 4 is an opportunity to build and foster relational capital. And so this is where I'm going to be tapping into our new Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Access in ways that we can really look to hear more from our students. We want to hear our student voices, we want to hear our family and caregiver voices. So we'd like to invite them to be part of advisory teams with us. We want to know how they're experiencing the district, the things that they want us to be considering. We also want to engage our family by providing opportunities for them to engage with us positively. And we want to hold coffee and conversations, bringing families into our schools as the hub to just listen to the things that they're wondering about and just paying attention to those voices because their voices matter to us. Presence and visibility. One of the things that I also want to prioritize is how we show up in our district and how we show up for our faculty and for our students. There will be presence from our senior cabinet, a regular presence in our schools and at school events. We also want to invite our schools to have presence at our board meetings this year and moving forward. So you'll note the dates that are on this slide. So you'll note the dates that are on this slide. We will have each one of our schools come and share updates from their school climate plans. They will come with students. We're hoping to bring student voice and faculty voice into these, these presentations that they'll come and share with us over the course of this year. So we're excited to have them, we're excited to have our students be present as well. And so I think this is really important. As I referenced, one of our strengths is the support of a board. So as superintendent, I will make sure that I am scheduling time to really listen to and understand the needs of our board members as they are the stewards of our community because they will be bringing then in the voices from members of our community, so I want to pay close attention to that. I also want to listen to the insights and perspectives around our current state in our district. But more importantly, where do we see ourselves going? And using that to influence the changes that we look forward to doing, making collaboratively. And establishing a system so that there is effective and ongoing communication and fostering the relationship that I have, our senior cabinet has, and our instructional leadership team has with our Board of Education. And now as we get to collective commitment number five, this is really the place that I will be tapping into Dr. Driffl for that fiscal responsibility. I think it's really important that in Dr. Driffl, we've already started to have many conversations about sitting down with him and reviewing our district's operating budget, taking a look at our short, short and long-term planning projects and capital improvement projects. I really need to acclimate myself to the business office protocols and set some financial goals with Dr. Driffl. I know Dr. Driffl brings expertise in this area. I want to learn just a little bit of what he knows and understands, but hopefully it'll be enough for me to be able to speak to and have that working knowledge and awareness. But as I referenced, this work that I intend to help to continue to lead in our district, I couldn't do without the support of each one of these offices. And so I will continue to work very closely with our assistant superintendents so that we can really move the district forward and support all of our students and families. And so that's a glimpse into some of the things I look forward to doing for our district. Are there any questions?
Board members, questions or comments?
I just had one, but I, maybe it was a little oversight or I missed it. On the schools coming to the BOE meetings, first of all, wonderful, to make their, their plans and share. I didn't see Harris Hill on there.
You didn't, okay.
No, I just want to, I'm, I got you.
You got me.
Yeah.
You got me.
I was looking for, I think.
Harris, Harris Hill is coming.
Thank, I know it is, I know it is.
Thank you, thank you.
They're waiting for their appointment.
Yes. We have to make, we have to make sure you're here. Thank you, great catch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just super excited.
Yep.
Going to this year.
Thank you for hitting the ground running. You've already done a lot of work. I know your position technically starts for a couple more weeks, but we appreciate all you're doing to keep moving us forward.
It's interesting that you say that because when I met with Brandon today, I said, okay, Brandon, I know it's not the first 100 days, but they started already. So we're, we're busy, we are busy. And I, and I, I'm so thankful for the, the people that we have in our district because they're doing amazing work on behalf of our students and our families and our faculty. And I just, I think it's an honor. And I am so excited to continue to be part of the wonderful things that we've started and will continue. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Going to turn it over to Dr. Driffl, thank you.
Appreciate it. Good evening, board. Hope everybody's having a, a good summer. So there are a handful of approval items on your agenda for consideration tonight. The first of which are capital project change orders. So there are about a handful, half dozen or so. There are two larger ones, one of which was at the new bus garage, retrofitting some steel in the roofing to make more space for the mezzanine storage on the second level there. And then because we had such a warm winter, we ran into site conditions around mud, basically. Things never really froze over, so the contractor encountered field conditions that made things really difficult, so they had to bring in extra soil. So that's what the extra cost is on that one. The other ones were smaller or requests. As we heard from Ms. Dunson this evening, and we'll learn a little bit more in a moment, we'll approve our lunch fund budget for next year and adopt those meal prices. Meal prices are going to stay the same, as she mentioned. Of those five or six districts that are still not CEP eligible, offering free meals to all, we're proud to say that we have the lowest meal prices in the county next year, so that's a positive thing. It's August, so we're going to adopt our tax warrant, establish the tax rates, I'll review that. We have an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Penfield. So this is for a brush drop-off location at our Gloria Drive property. So as the town of Penfield is engaging in the construction of a new DPW building, over the course of the next two years, they needed a temporary location, so they reached out to us. We were originally going to approve this back in our July meeting, but they had pulled it from their agenda based on some neighbors' concerns around what that would look like. So I think they've answered some of those questions, so their board approved this last week. So in turn, it falls to the board to see if they would like to reciprocate. And then finally, as we reviewed at our last meeting, the 2425 district-wide emergency response plan needs to be approved. We've had 30 days of public comment, so we have to approve that prior to the September 1st deadline. So I just want to jump into some of the financials to just kind of put further context to Angela's presentation from earlier. So last financial year was, was strong. We did have a slight operational deficit, $2.41 million in expenditures versus $2.3 million in revenues. That was planned. We, because every school district in New York State had the free meals during COVID, participation rates went sky high. So revenue went way higher than anticipated. And in New York State, you're not allowed to carry too much fund balance in your lunch fund account because it's meant to be a self-sustaining program, but you don't want to price gouge either. So they want you to turn a small profit, but not too much profit. So the way that calculation works is they look at one year of revenues, and then they average three months of whatever your revenues are, and that's your level of fund balance. So for the last two years, we've been about $100,000 higher than that. So we've tried to have a small operational deficit the last two years. We were not successful the first year, we turned a small profit, but this past year, we did have a little bit of a deficit. And we have a planned deficit this year as well because we're still over that fund balance level. So sales outpaced projections this year, the deficit wasn't as large as planned. And food purchases were slightly over budget, but not as expensive as last year. Sort of that inflation is tamping down a little bit. And as I mentioned, we are still carrying a slightly elevated fund balance. So that brings us to our proposed budget for next year. So it's just under $2.5 million, $2.46 million. Meal, not Mella, retains the same meal pricing as 2324. So that, that budget is just a little bit higher than where we were last year. The full worksheet is in Board Doc Street if you have further questions on what that looks like for our lunch fund for next year. So yeah, as I mentioned, it's August, so we have to consider our tax collection period. So this year, the tax collection period will start actually on the first day of school, September 3rd. So as a reminder to our students, staff, and families, first day of school, September 3rd, Tuesday, right after Labor Day. Enjoy your last couple of weeks of summer. And it'll go until October 31st. There is a penalty applied after October 1st, it's a 2% fee. The board must annually adopt its tax warrant and set the rates. So the good news is, is that the levy is exactly what we were projecting back in, in the spring. The assigned fund balance, which is the level that we put towards reduction of taxes, is exactly what we were projecting throughout our budget development materials. And in this chart of all of our towns, the first column indicates what the rate was for last school year, what the rates will be for this upcoming fall, the 2425 year, the dollar difference in those rates and the percentage difference in those rates, and then what we had forecasted back at our meeting on April 16th, so four months ago. And you'll see that relative to our forecast, we're just a little bit under what we were forecasting all the rates to be, so really close to projections. All that is, is a factor of just a little bit of varying assessment data over the last couple of months, but really close to where we were. So for instance, in Penfield, we were projecting the tax rate to increase 2.16%. It actually is increasing 2.11%. I always look, because we're in a multi-town, school district, at that true value tax rate on the bottom row there. So last year, the true value tax rate was $18.94 for $1,000 of assessed value. This upcoming year, it'll be $17.90 of assessed value. So we were forecasting it to drop 5.41%, it actually dropped 5.46%. So that's what those last two columns indicate. I always, at this point, want to make it publicly known that if anybody has questions about their tax bills as they begin to arrive in September, call my office, I'm happy to walk you through what that looks like. A lot of folks have questions about STAR, when they're going to get their STAR checks. That I can't control as much, but I'm always happy to be an advocate for them by contacting the Department, State Department of Tax and Finance if I need to, if something goes missing, or explain where those STAR check amounts come from as well. So yeah, that was it for me tonight, thank you.
All right. Board members, questions or comments?
Yes. Dr. Driffl, just back to this last with the, the listing of towns. What is the, why do we have those specific towns on this chart?
Those are the six towns that make up the Penfield Central School District that we have a piece of, right?
Yeah, that makes a ton of sense, thank you.
And you'll become very familiar with the budget development process come spring. And we'll talk about equalization rates and assessment data and all that fun stuff.
Okay, I'm really excited, thank you. I wanted to commend you and the town of Penfield on this, you sort of said it, but it's, it's been a big deal, the brush drop-off situation in the town of Penfield and changing locations because of the construction the town is doing. And I think it's a really great example that we should highlight is partnership with the town, proactively, responsibly, timely, and with really good intent for the town. So I appreciate your collaboration and effort. And the other, then a question I had is the CEP eligibility. I think one of Angela Dunson's slides looked like we were creeping towards that 25%. Is there, what has been the trend over the last few years? And do we anticipate that coming to that point?
So maybe, so, so for context, the CEP threshold, it required 40% of your previous years, it was 40% to be eligible for the free meals for all. Congress, because school launches a national program, reduced that to 25% this year. Historically, we were in the neighborhood of 10%, maybe 10, 15 years ago, for a long time. Over the last decade or so, we've bumped up to 18 to 22% kind of per building. None of our six buildings currently are at that 25% level. We've been stable at that 18, 19, 20, 21 range. So I, if I had to guess, I'd say we probably wouldn't hit the 25% in any of our buildings this year, next year, maybe going forward. But it's certainly something we'll keep an eye on. There has been further discussion about reducing the 25%, to 20% or 15%. In that case, you know, obviously we would, would fall within that. You know, but for now, we're just not eligible.
So it could be building by building, not district-wide necessarily?
Yeah, it's by building, which presents an interesting.
Yeah, dynamic there, yeah.
Scenario if a building were to hit it and then the other buildings, because it's not based on student need at that point, it's the whole population of the building, and then you get into tricky situations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Dr. Driffl, I'm always, always grateful and pleased that you are in charge of the district's money. I always understand exactly what is going on when you explain it, and then it goes away. And I know that you're always available for a phone call, like any community member, any board member, anybody in the audience, because I know everybody's into these numbers. No, seriously, I really appreciate your brain and how you keep us fiscally safe and moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so we're going to transition now and bring up our Director for Professional Learning, Mr. Kevin Marriott.
Hey.
Hi, Kevin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board, good evening, senior cabinet and everyone here. Excited to be here. Unfortunately, this is not where I get to talk about all the successes that have been going on in our professional learning program. The reason that I'm here this evening is to explain some of the changes to our professional learning plan as we have our plan implemented starting 2021 and 2026 with modifications along the way with our professional learning plan committee. So I'm excited to share some of those changes and hear if you have any questions or comments about that. So our professional learning plan, as I mentioned, was developed in 2021, but we make modifications along the way. We have representation for this committee. There are 11 members on this committee. New York State requires that at least 50% or more make up teachers and those who are working directly every day with kids, to which we are in compliance with. Our professional learning plan, really the goal is to make sure that we are offering opportunities to add to the toolkits and make sure our adults are prepared every day with what is the latest research and what we know is good for all of our kids. This is in line with our mission, our vision, our core commitments, and we've updated it as well in the last two years to make sure that it's in tune with our Equity Long Range Plan and the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Framework. It's also aligned with the New York State Professional Learning Standards. And each year, the board has to approve that our plan continues. So in terms of some of the updates this year, as I mentioned, this is not where I'll be going through our whole catalog. That will be an upcoming board meeting, which I am excited about. But really, it's to discuss some of the changes that are here. And they're not very exciting changes, whether that's good or bad, right? We have some new members to the committee based on people who have been appointed into different positions, retirements as well. We've updated some years and dates and some of the verbiage on some of our lists. We do, as part of our onboarding processes, for our new hires, they're assigned either a mentor or a peer. That means if you're coming into our district, based on your experience, you have a different level of support. And last year, our, one of our big projects was to work on updating checklists to make sure they're inclusive of all roles. Previously, in our plan, it was a little directed just towards classroom teachers, but now these checklists are much more inclusive of our speech language learning pathologists, our NOL teachers, our special education teachers. And they're supposed to be guides towards discussion, towards tools of what we have available in the district. So we updated, based on some of the input from our new hires, some of the verbiage with that and some of what they found was most pertinent and helpful for them with the past year. Something too, in, in my last note here, I want to mention is, you won't see this in the plan, right? The plan is very general, that's separate from what we have in our catalog and what the offerings are for our educators, for our faculty and staff. But we are taking on more of a coaching approach this year with our new hires. We do have required monthly meetings for all of our new hires and the Penfield Education Association, the PEA. We have had a lot of stakeholder involvement with that, which has been great. But the feedback has been, really, we have a session, and what's the follow-up with the session? How do we know we're implementing the things we're learning about and implementing them with fidelity? So while this is not in our plan, right, we will be implementing this this year and based on what happens with it, we'll determine when and how that will go into our plan moving forward. But the idea is, we have teacher leaders that have already been recruited that I'll be working directly with. And our new hires will pick different elements of where they are in their learning and what they want to learn about that connects to our goals of the district. That might be things like equitable grading practices. We'll have a cohort towards best practices in NOL for our students receiving diverse linguistic services. We also have a partnership too with, with BOCs for special education and assistive technology, as well as equitable grading practices. So I'll be working with these coaches to coach our new hires and not have just one session, but continue to coach them about what they're implementing, what are the tools we're sharing, how it's going, and to make sure that we can uplift their voice as well as our students' voices in the process, to make sure that this is a positive experience and we're showing growth. So with that, I'll kind of pause right there and see if you have questions. Again, I have a lot more that I want to chat more about our catalog, I'm happy to. I know I'll be back for another meeting, but that's really just some of our changes that are coming to the plan. So I'd like to open it up to all of you.
Board members, questions, comments?
I have a question, I just have a comment. I really love that you have differentiation within that plan because as a teacher... I really love that you have differentiation within that plan because as a teacher, I know I've sat with colleagues at faculty meetings where there's a PE teacher, and they're like, this has nothing to do with me. And I know that's really frustrating because then our staff doesn't feel seen and valued. And I also love that new people coming in, there's different aspects where they're really focusing on something they need. Because, right, we all come to the table with different strengths and different areas of growth. So I really, really like that, that it's differentiated. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow.
Anyone else?
No, you go first. Yeah, it's buzzing around, and then Kristen touched on it. So can you explain a little bit more what she just touched on, the, where you can say what you need strengthening in, where there's a level of choice? And specifically, like, I might not know, I might not think I need something, but I actually do. So when are those, when is, when are there things taught to everybody, whether you think you need it or not?
Yeah, that's a great question, right? Because we might not know what we need, right? And I think, and I reflect on the research that comes from some of our major organizations, right? Like, Learning Forward is a predominant organization in professional learning. And the research that shows the importance of coaching and choice in professional learning is abundant, right? So instead of saying, hey, what do you want to work on? We really have like a list of about seven things that we've tailored, right? And that we're going to be working on for this upcoming year, within those that really align to some of the slides that Dr. Potter mentioned in her entry plan, especially if you look at that visual of some of our key elements of restorative practices, MTSS, equitable grading practices, and SEL, right? There's a very clear alignment with the sessions we chose and where our district is and where we want to be with our district. There will be choice in the sense of, we will have our coaches there at the very beginning of the year to present and say, hey, here's what you'll learn about if you come to these sessions, right? So to be able to equip them with what might be most pertinent. I mean, if you're coming in as a special education teacher, you might want to be geared towards some of those sessions, towards MTSS, because it is most pertinent. There is no doubt that everyone can benefit from all of these offerings, but we also want to give the message that we're here to support and coach. And really, I think of Tozaretta Hammond's model of ignite, chunk, chew, review, right? That like, that chunking is very, very important to making sure we're not overwhelming our new hires. We want to make sure they're acclimated, that they're feeling affirmed, right? Because if we can make sure that they're feeling affirmed, they're going to be able to bring their best for the kids, right? So for sure, there will be opportunities to reflect along the way because the plan currently stands as, we'll have our choice, we'll have a meet and greet, hear about the different options, guide people with their choices. There will be one choice to take for the first half of the year, then we have a mid-year reflection, and then they'll pick something else. So it's not like they pick one thing and you stick with that for the entire year and they're stuck with it, right?
And I'll just also add that I think that Kevin has really been intentional about making sure that anything he puts in front of our new faculty is aligned with where we're working as a district. So as he mentioned beginning, the Equity Long Range Plan is central to how we are identifying the things that we want all of our faculty to know and have working knowledge for. I think the other place is our faculty meetings over the past three years. That's like, not a choice. We have had new learning for all faculty and will continue in ways that really emphasizes our focus. So Kevin's done an amazing job, and I think it's not just as we're thinking about the faculty when they join us, but as part of our new faculty orientation, he really does structure that differentiation to make sure that everyone is really kind of getting what they need, but those needs are aligned with our district focus. And yes, there's still always opportunities for growth.
Thank you, Dr. Potter.
Sure. I'm good, like, it's what Nicole shared, a box, like, yes, our new hires will have choice and how they would like to grow and what they're interested in and work on, and also what is mandatory, right? And I just wanted to make sure that the mandatory was still happening, right? Because Penfield has standards, and we have expectations. And this is what we need you to be and to do. And also, what would you like to learn about? What are you interested in? Where can you see yourself focusing and thriving, right? Because like you said, when our, our folks, our staff and our faculty, when they see, when they feel seen and heard and validated, they bring their best foot forward. Yeah, it's a great thing. And I've experienced that in my teaching career. And I was just like so excited to come back and give my best to the kiddos. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, and we are excited to learn more as the year progresses.
I'm looking forward to the catalog.
That sounds really exciting.
Oh, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
And that concludes Superintendent's report.
Great first report.
I'm so happy that I'm through my first year because as I'm still making mistakes, I'm getting better. So it'll be easier.
And you're going to help me, because I'm going to make many.
I'll try. I'll just give you a look. All right. So we are on 7A, change orders. There's no public comment. Can I have a motion and a second that the change orders as described on your computers be approved? Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? The recommended food service C-Fund budget is $2,460,000. For the 2024-25 school year, can I please have a motion and a second that the board approves the lunch fund budget for the 2024-25 school year as recommended?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion and a second that the board approves the prices of school meals as recommended for the 2024-25 school year?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion and a second that the above-described transfers and adjustments be approved and that the school tax rates for the 24-25 school year be set based upon a real property tax levy of $70,541,600?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? We are on 8E.
For the private nurse.
Yeah, we amended that. I remembered this time. Should I read all of that, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second that the resolution for town usage be approved?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? We have policies for a second read? Was there a lot of feedback?
There wasn't any feedback. We had one question, and the one question that came to us was around the word "all." And one of the things that we have used in the past when describing "all" is just making sure that it is the acknowledgement of all students, every student, regardless of identity markers or, or any of those things. But we removed the word "all." I believe, I can't remember exactly which section it was in, but within the policy. So we removed the word "all." But then there was also a question around the word "create" and "maintain environments" where our students, staff, and families feel safe. One of the things that I thought about, the word "create," is that we should keep that because it's our responsibility to create the environments where they can feel safe and welcomed and belonged. But we did omit the word "all." So there was just one change to the policy. We made that, that change today. And I think it was updated in preparation for tonight.
Can I have a motion and a second that the board approves the policy 7110 and the regulation 7110-1, R1?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I have a motion and a second that the board approves the 24-25 District Emergency Response Plan as presented on July 9th, 2024?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? So we just have NISBA to just, we talked about it last meeting, right? And just so you guys got an update, I know there were some questions. I sent out an email about if you wanted to take a bus.
From Newark?
From here, I believe. Is it from Newark? I thought it was from here.
It's from Newark.
It's from Newark.
I can't remember what it says. That was earlier this morning. But it's, if you, it's not really that close. But there was an offering. And then I know some people had questions for Kathleen as well. She did respond. And then I'll email that to you today, or later on today. And then committee assignments.
So we, we do have a change for health and safety. We need to take Nicole off, right?
Nicole off health and safety. We're putting Meg on that. Okay. And then we'll have the PTA, we're getting more of those in all of the different district meetings or school-based meetings. We'll send those out to you so we can kind of update Kathleen with those things as well.
Sounds good. So the, the NISBA legislative representative, what is that? I noticed that there's nobody for that. Is that a big deal that there's nobody for that?
That is really a big deal, especially that someone who kind of gives us the information. It was Mark, yeah. On all of the voting, the resolutions that happen at the convention and what they're talking about and thinking about. So it is something that hopefully someone is able
The convention meeting, the one that's happening in October?
Yeah, but there are meetings. I think there are meetings. I know, was it last year that it was? One year. It was on Zoom. I don't remember when it was.
I don't think it was on Zoom last year. I think it was Zoom the year before.
Maybe it was the year before, but it's, you would just go and then kind of go over all of the different regulations and then report back to us.
But how is that different from, oh, but one is Monroe County, one is state. It's every Wednesday?
No. I don't think it's every. The legislate, the legislative, the county one was, yeah, every Wednesday. Or not every Wednesday, one Wednesday a month, I believe it is. Because they rotate all of the different committees, yeah.
If the county one is representative of every district in the county, wouldn't the NISBA one just need one representative from the county?
No.
No, every district still gets represented at the state?
Yeah.
And where's that meeting? Do you know?
I don't know. Yeah, I think it does. I think it varies from year to year. But they would, like, Kathleen would let them know, and then they would, whoever's in contact, they would reach out to you and let you know when it is and, and all of that information.
I mean, because I could potentially swap out legislative. Monroe County is doing that. I can't do both.
Legislative, I don't think it's, I really don't think it's monthly. I think it's really just for that meeting. I'll, I'll ask. I'll reach out and ask.
Yeah, I think it would definitely help to know specifically when they're meeting.
I don't know if we'll know like the exact, but I can find out like how often, if it's, yeah.
And where, like, we know that the Monroe County is going to be in the Strath Island, so that's, I know that that would take 10 minutes to get to. But I can't imagine, it wouldn't be a virtual meeting if it's statewide, right? That would be a significant expense.
I believe they have a local meeting, and then you can also zoom in, or you can go to the, I believe. I could be wrong.
Let me find out.
But I'm not sure. I think it's best for us probably to get the real answer.
Here's a calendar of the Monroe County Committee meetings I can send to you that they have for the year.
Okay. Kathleen, by any chance, do you know the, the NISBA one also? Do you know the, the one that we don't have anybody representing that?
That's the one she's talking about.
Oh, I thought it was the Monroe County.
I'm not sure about. The Monroe County one, I took, well, I took that form and I broke it out by committees and sent that to everyone. So it was here's legislative, all in a chunk, so you didn't have to like look all the way down the paper. So I already pulled those out for everybody.
So it's just that I'll find out on that legislative representative. All right. My computer wasn't working. Can I have a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:04 PM?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?